All right, good afternoon, everybody. Before we start the meeting, I'd just like to point out some community awareness items. Join me and the D A R members at Granberry Square Plaza for a celebration of U.S. Constitution Week on Friday, September 23rd. It's taking place at 1:00 P.M. Also, there's a Pancake Supper on Saturday, September 24th. It's an annual fundraiser for the senior center. October the 1st, Preserve Granberry Annual Fundraiser's Party on the Peak, and I believe you can contact Preserve Granberry members and still reserve some tickets for that. This is our September 20th, 2011, regular council meeting. We're here at the City Hall. At this time, to lead us off and get us started, I invite Pastor John Knox with Church of Christ, step up to your podium and lead us all in our invocation. If you would, please rise.
Just for awareness, it'll make us aware, if y'all may already know, Kevin Jones, our fire inspector, here for the city. His father passed away several days ago, and his funeral's tomorrow, so I'll pray for that family as well. Get on, we're good. Let's pray. Father, we're thankful to be here tonight and appreciate those that are willing to serve. Fathers, we all serve together in our respective positions here in the community. We pray that every single one of us will give very careful thought to our ways. We pray, Father, that we'll choose our words carefully, that we'll be wise, that we will really strive to promote unity by mutual respect for each other. Father, additionally, we pray for Kevin Jones and all of his family in the loss of his father. And, Father, we pray that you'll comfort that good family. And finally, Father, at this time of evening, we acknowledge that the evening shift is starting for both our city officers and our deputies working in the county. We pray for their safety and for the well-being of their families, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, please. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Please be seated. Council members, we'll start off with the consent agenda. You were supplied with a copy of the September 6th, 2011 minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes at this time. We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett. Need a second, please? A second by Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen, could you straighten your microphone out? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving to the first deliberation item. Consider an ordinance providing for the proposed fiscal year 2010-2011 budget adjustments. During the year, various issues and projects arise that require a change to the original budget to ensure that the budgeted amounts are applied appropriately to the developing operational environment. Here to give us a little rundown on that is Ava with the Finance Department.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, in front of you have a list of budget adjustments that were completed during the year 2010-2011. During the year, various projects arises that require us to adjust the budget. And you have a summary of all these adjustments on the first page. If you have any questions, please let me know.
So, Council, do you have any questions for staff regarding any of these budget amendments and adjustments? This is your chance to speak, Council. Entertain a motion to approve the budget adjustments as presented, and approval of an ordinance to do so.
Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance providing for the fiscal year 2010-2011 budget adjustments.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Need a second?
Second.
We've got a second by Mr. Parsons. As I mentioned, any discussion regarding this? Calling for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That'll bring up item number two on tonight's deliberation agenda. Consider a master professional services agreement with Texas Meter and Device Company, LLC, also known as TMDC, for field meter testing and verification of approximately 40 current transformer, or also known as CT electrical meters, which are currently located within the city of Granberry. The city of Granberry electrical infrastructure currently includes some 146 of these current transformer type of electrical meters, placed mainly in high commercial use locations, retail establishments, restaurants, school district, hospitals, and city and county facilities, as well as apartment complexes. The approximate $5,500 for testing of 40 meters is what we have before us, and I'm gonna turn it over to Becky to speak with us regarding why it's important that we do this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Mr. Manager, I'm going to kind of defer here to Josh Kovar with Texas Meter and Device, if that's all right, and he can answer and do a quick presentation, answer questions regarding the technical aspect of why we do this and what they find when doing testing of these meters.
If you would, state your name for the record, please.
Josh Kovar.
What can you tell us about why we need to proceed with testing of these type of meters, sir?
Well, sir, I had a big, long speech here printed out that I was gonna give to you, and I've decided just to wing it from there.
That's good. We appreciate that.
Basically, in a nutshell, Texas Meter and Device has been around for almost 70 years. Between all that, we've done this revenue analysis that you have in front of you for different co-ops in municipalities around the state. We've got customers such as Deep East Electrical Co-op, which is a co-op of about 15,000 customers, Sam Houston Electric Co-op, another big co-op there. We recently finished a project 2008 for Austin Energy that we've done some analysis there. Basically, what we do is we go out and we test your electrical CT rated meters and find any errors that are there. Because we've been doing this for so long, we have the knowledge, the experience, and the background to do it. Collectively, between all of our divisions, the division I run and our sales division, we have over 100 years of experience testing electrical meters. If you refer to the presentation that is in front of you, I've got a couple reasons why you need to test some meters. Identify faulty instrument transformer meters is one. I can't figure out how to work this thing. There we go. As, over time, along with, just like we do, things break. CT rated meters fail, and if they fail, you don't make money. You lose registration on your meter. That same aspect, along with establishing the accuracy of the meter registration and verifying the as-found CT accuracy and the metering wire loop of the meter, it's the same exact thing. As, over time, with CT sets are out there, they wear down, they break, and things just, things happen to them. What we do is we come in and we check all those problems. We make sure that the CTs are tested accurately, make sure they're working correctly, we verify the accuracy of the meter, and we check all the warranty. Along with that, you'll see further down a page, we have verify proper billing multiplier. There's a multiplying factor that goes into CT rated meters. If these multiplying factors are not correct, you could be losing anywhere from 50% to 60% to 100% of your registration. And these are different things that we provide as we go through and test these sites. If you look here on the deliverables that we have, we have our field test reports, CT ratio, burden analysis, meter kilowatt hour accuracy test, and finally, our revenue impact analysis. The testing, I will briefly touch on a little bit here. The first sheet here is just a handwritten copy of what we do. We record all sorts of information, such as a consumer name, meter number, kilowatt hour reading, things of that nature, voltages, currents, phase angles. All that stuff we use to calculate whether the site is working correctly. If you notice down there about the middle of the page, you have what's called a KW/KVA calculation. Those are based on calculations off this sheet. If those two match up, then we can determine whether the meter is working correctly. If not, then we can determine if there's a problem or not. Mainly for the KW there, what we do there is we have a, what we call clocking. We clock the meter disc and see how many times it goes around in however many seconds. And if that number does not match up with our CT analysis unit that we also use in accordance with this, then we can also determine if there's a problem or not.
So, let me stop you for a second.
Go ahead.
So, you are able to field test these. You do not need to pull the meters in order to test them, is that correct?
What happens with a CT rated meter, it's different than a normal house meter. A CT rated meter is not in a circuit like a regular meter or a breaker. Because of the instruments, it's not in a circuit, so it's outside a circuit. So, when we pull the meter to actually test the meter and do all of our checks, the customer never notices that they're out of power. I actually call myself the meter ninja, because if people don't know I'm there, they'll never see me, because I'm that quick.
And you're able to test, it's my understanding, the majority of these type of meters are used in three-phase operation. So, one leg of the phase could be down, as far as the meter is concerned, and that's one of the reasons to periodically test, and you would never know that that one leg was down?
Correct. Because the meter is not in the circuit, you have the external wires that go along with it. If those external wires are broken, you'll never know it unless you verify it on the meter. Now, there's also some single-phase applications that could be used, such as, for instance, on our, in some co-op jobs, we have chicken houses that have single-phase applications. And those CT rated applications are used there. But because the meter is not in the circuit, if a phase has gone down or a wire has broken, unless someone physically goes and checks that wire and physically sees that wire broken or notices, noticing it, the voltage flashing on the meter, they'll never know that you're losing that voltage there.
And that's not something that our meter readers are capable of doing?
To an extent, they should be.
Or are they just not trained to do that?
One is they're probably not trained to do. Second is depending on where the brake is. If it's a visual brake on top of a pole, they would be able to see it. But sometimes the brake is actually inside the meter can or inside the conduit that goes to the meter. Now, unless you physically pull that meter and put a volt meter and check voltage in the meter can, you'll never notice it. And that's where this next report comes in. This is where we have our CT ratio burden test. If you notice, you'll, it's pretty much the second screenshot there is where you have all your voltages and currents and phase angles. Again, that's the same information that we wrote down on the first sheet. This is just more of a printed-out, nice-looking copy that we have. Now, the top right-hand corner, you'll notice what we have, what we call a vector diagram. Here's another tool that we use to make sure the meter's working correctly. You'll notice there that you have an A and an A that's basically pretty close together. From that screen, we can determine if the voltage and current is not working correctly together. If the two currents and voltages are not together, like here on this shot, then you could be losing 33%, 66% of your registration, or worse, the meter could be actually turning backwards and you could be losing money altogether. Further down the screen, you'll have what we have, a ratio test. The ratio test here on this one is for 205 amp CT. In accordance with our regulations that we go by, we're allowed 2% of either side of 100. So, basically, this one was at 205. We can go down as low as 196 and as high as 204. Now, for instance, if this CT here would have been a 405 CT, and we would've got this type of ratio, you'd have been losing half of your registration here. Again, this is something that your meter readers are not trained to do and do not have the equipment to do. That's where we come in. We have the equipment, we have the training and the knowledge to be able to do this. Next screen here, you'll see where we have a field service meter test on the actual accuracy of the kilowatt hour meter. Again, this is just general information that we have on the front nameplate of the meter. About midway down the screen, you'll see where we have an as-found and as-left test. That's where we actually test the accuracy of the meter. We have equipment that we have in our vans that we are able to stick the meter in, apply voltage and current, and run three different tests to determine whether the accuracy of the meter is correct. Now, if this meter here tested at 100%, if an element had been out, or as you said earlier, a phase had been out in the meter, this could've been anywhere from 75% to 66% to 50%. I've seen them go as low as 33% registration on the meter. So, basically, what that amounts to is for every dollar that you're supposed to be generating off the meter, you're only generating 33 cents, which means you're losing 66 cents for every dollar. As you add that up, up to hundreds, thousands, $100,000, that adds up pretty quick. The last slide here is probably the main thing you're most concerned about. This is our revenue analysis sheet. This is where we go in, and any meters that we find are in error, we calculate what the error, percent error was on that meter. Now, depending on what we find, depends upon the error. The first one there, on the very top row, you see it says, "Element, meter element bad." That equated to a 33% registration loss. If you go further down the page, it said, "Failed meter test." That equated to, again, a 33% loss. There's one about middle of the page here, it says, "Meter running backwards, current rolled, 100% loss." That meter was not registering a single dime. It was standstill. That meter, you weren't making any money off that. That meter stood out there for no telling how long, and no one noticed it. That's where we come in, and we're able to find that problem and be able to correct that problem right then and there if we need to. So, from this sheet here, we calculate what the, what the error was. We take the average kilowatt hour history from the past year and calculate what your corrected kilowatt hour should've been, and then based on your kilowatt hours per unit, we can calculate how much revenue you can expect to gain. Now, we do the same thing for the kilowatt hour, KW demand charge, which obviously is gonna be a little bit more, but the readings are gonna be a little bit less. On this example here, you can notice that in the kilowatt hour impact, they gained over $1,400 a month, $14,000 a month in lost revenue, and the KW impact was $5,000 a month. Well, if you do the math and add those together, that equates to almost $20,000 a month that they were losing. Times that by 12, it comes up to $230,000 a year that they were losing in lost revenue. And this is just on 400 meters. Now, with the number of meters that you have here in the city, it could be different, it could be less, I would expect it might be, but on the flip side, it could also be higher, depending on what type of errors we find out there. That's where we come in, that's what we do. We have the experience to do it. Myself, I have three other guys. I have a guy who used to work for L C R A for generation. I have a gentleman who used to work for Austin Energy, A E P. We have the experience to come in and do this and find your problems that you need to find and improve your revenue cash flow in the electrical department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say, too, looking at our utility system, we need to make, we're gonna hear from the people who have high bills, but we're not necessarily gonna hear from the people who have low bills. It's our responsibility to make sure for all the users that everybody's carrying their weight, and that's how we can lower rates, so we can make sure that there's no meters out there that are not being properly read and working. So, we're putting forth this effort here to make sure that we have the most accurate system we can have, and that's why we're bringing this forward.
This is only for commercial, right?
This would be any CT-based meter, which is normally commercial.
Is there any CT residential?
Multi-residential locations.
But with these multiple CTs, that's where you can lose a lot of money fast. And so, we're trying to get the revenue in to make sure that we can lower rates as soon as possible for our overall base. That's what we're looking for.
Council, what we're looking at is a total bill to figure 40 meters and ran through a test as presented is $5,517.50. You'll see it listed in Exhibit A under Statement or Scope of Work as part of this package agreement. Any questions by Council regarding this for staff or for the person here?
Mayor.
All right, Mr. Allen, we'll let you start it off.
Thanks, sir. You said that if you take one leg down, it wouldn't affect anything?
No, sir. What he was making reference to is if the wire in the actual metering circuit had went down, no one would notice it. Because, because the meter's not in the circuit, the customer will never notice that that leg is out of the meter.
Right. Are you familiar with the ones that's got the big fuses in them?
Yes, sir.
How you gonna do those?
With the big fuses?
Yes, sir.
Now, when you refer to big fuses, you talking about on the transformer, or you talking about actually at the meter, at the breaker box?
It's the meter box.
Well, again...
I've gotta know one that's inside the building.
Right.
And I lost one leg, and I lost some equipment. Nothing happened.
Again, these, these meters aren't like those. When you have a regular, regular house meter, if you ever looked inside a box, you've got two wires coming in the top and two wires in the bottom, and the meter's in the middle. When you pull that meter, you open up the circuit. The CT rated meters are different. They actually have what's called a CT or a donut, and it looks just like this, and it's a black donut, that the service wire goes through, and as it goes through that, it goes to the customer. Those external units is what connects to the meter.
So, you're not gonna be checking the old ones, is what you're saying?
No. What's gonna happen is, is we can check the old ones. Now, those will require a power outage. But the CT rated meters that we're making reference to here do not require an outage from the customer. They'll never notice that we're there.
Well, I tell you, I think everybody's bill is high, and I think you went out and checked them, and I know it'd be good doing your job, but I think if we went up on the commercial bills anymore, we'd all be in the doghouse, myself.
Well, that's not what we have before us, is going up on the billing, sir.
But how long does it take you to complete the test on each meter?
Approximately, we're from 15 to 30 minutes, depending on what's there.
Okay. If you look at your deal, where are y'all out of?
Waco. Personally, I'm out of Corpus Christi.
All right. Well, you're saying 15 to 30 minutes to complete the test. Give us our information with these.
Right.
Well, you're charging us $125 per hour.
Yes, sir.
It's only taking you 15 minutes, times 40, how'd you come up with $5,000?
Well, that's what I wanted to make reference to. $125 an hour at 40 hours in the week is how I get to 5,000, plus we charge the mileage. Now...
You've got another $517.50 for mileage.
Right, correct.
So, I still don't understand your math. It takes you 15 minutes to do one.
Right.
Just to save 30, I can round it off 2,500 real quick.
Well, here's what I wanted to comment on, what he said earlier, is when I said we do 40 meters, that's what we average in a week. We average 40 meters in a week, is when we're doing eight hours a day, because we're used to doing the co-ops that are, you have to drive so far to get to. Here in the city, when I gave them that number of 40, it was just an estimated number. I look to be able to do anywhere from 50 to 60 meters in one week here.
But the contract is only for 40?
The contract should only be for 40 hours, not 40 meters.
Okay, but you just said...
It is what the contract states. It says 40 hours.
I understand that, Mayor, but he was saying 40 meters, what he was gonna check, or what I believe Becky said.
No, I'm, I'm gonna come here, when I come, I'm gonna come for 40 hours, and if I can check all 140 meters in 40 hours, then that's what I'll do. I will not stop until I get 40-hour mark. We will show up here Monday morning at 8:00 a.m., and we will stop at 3:00 o'clock on Friday afternoon.
And Mr. Kovar, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you find that there is no problem with a meter, you move on and it doesn't take the max time?
Exactly.
If you find there is a problem and you pull it to repair it, then I guess it would take longer, or it would have to be sent off for repairs, is that correct?
Exactly. Depending on the problem that we find, if it's a wiring issue, and we can have assistance by a bucket truck and be able, a customer be able to take an outage, it could take anywhere from 20 minutes to an hour to fix the problem. If it's a meter error that needs to be fixed and sent off, then that obviously would have to take longer. If it's a mechanical meter, then we may be able to fix it there on-site, depending on what the error is. So, depending upon what we find and exactly what's wrong, it could take anywhere from an hour all the way up to four hours to fix a problem. But I don't want you to get concerned about this 40 meters. That's for 40 hours, and however many I can do in 40 hours, myself personally, I've been able to take out 20 meters in one day in a city just like this. So...
You can have three people doing it?
No, it's just gonna be one person here.
Just one person?
Right.
Are y'all gonna spend an hour here or drive back and forth?
No, we're gonna stay here.
How'd you come up with 750 miles?
Because that's the mileage from my house to here and back.
From Waco?
No, I live in Corpus Christi.
Oh, can you send somebody from Waco?
Don't have nobody in Waco.
So, your company's out of Waco?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, the only question I had was gonna be directed at staff. I think the gentleman gave a great presentation, and of course...
All right, let me, let me ask, any other council members have question of this gentleman before we send him to a chair to relax? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Wayne, I appreciate our city manager's comments as well. I'm not excited about seeing someone on a commercial business that, after this goes through and they get a, they get a reading now, because it's corrected, and they're gonna be paying, you know, $40 or $4,000 more a month, but that's, that's part of the business, I understand that. So, we, we, we have to do the right thing all the way across. Do we, right now, as we sit here tonight, do we have meters that we're concerned about that we think could be being underrated or giving that lesser, you know, calibration right now?
Well, we, we don't know. That's why we're gonna have them tested, because if you can...
Right, that's correct. We do not know the accuracy of the meters at this point. We do know that it's been somewhere between eight and 15 years since the meters have been tested. That's the information that we have.
So, we've, okay, and again, I just, I just need to bring this up to my colleagues, because it sounds like the gentleman's gonna do a great job testing meters, and so if 10 or 15 businesses have been under usage for that many years, that's how, I mean, you don't know, readers don't know, because they've been getting the same bill for years.
Correct.
So, it's gonna be a huge impact, but I agree that people should pay for what they use. So, I see, I see the benefit in doing this, I just, I don't really enjoy the timing of it, but I think, but thank you very much.
But as far as the billing system that we currently have in operation, it's going, it has a comparator feature in it to highlight these kind of major discrepancies, so if it, if it proceeds from this point forward, it's my understanding that we've got utility basic, some red flags that will pop up in the system now that will be monitored. Is that correct, Becky? Okay. That's something new. As you understand, there was a little bit of a restructuring of, of the departments, and Becky is now overseeing utility department. Do I have, have my nuts and bolts in the right place?
Well, not utility, Neighborhood Services.
Neighborhood Services, thank you. And so, it is, it could create an issue, as Councilman Tyra said, where we might have some discrepancies in existing bills going forward from this point, once we find some load issues and meter issues, and it could cause somebody's bill to raise exponentially. And I would hope that the city would work with those businesses as we go forward from this point, if we do find a discrepancy that's been going on.
And we have in the past.
Yes.
And would you work with them? Well, we would have to work with them. The major focus here is to get the bill going correctly in the future. You know, depending on the size of it, Becky has some suggestions.
I was gonna just interject real quickly. Josh did mention to me before the meeting that errors in the meters may also be to the benefit of the customer as well, so they could be overbilled at this point also. So, it works both ways.
Thank you.
Becky, what are the exception reports that come out of your utility billing? I mean, if you had a meter that wasn't turning, if you had a customer that was turned on, but he wasn't registering, would that been an error or...
Right. My understanding right now, and this is, I'm going into week four in this position, but my understanding is, and I've looked at the reports weekly for the first three cycles that I've been a part of, the, one of the reports is either a high read report, and then one is an abnormal report. So, there's an acceptable variance from the normal reading, and if, if a reading is either above or below, outside the range of the normal reading, then its flag is an abnormal. The reports also kick out zero reads, so if one doesn't register a read with an automatic meter reader, it's showing a zero. Some of them are showing a second and third zero consecutively. So, we're catching those now in those reports, and I'm reviewing all those reports.
And the other factor that we need to be concerned about is the multiplier, to make sure that the multiplier is in accordance with what type of business it is, is that correct?
With, with the meter type and the, and the type of wiring in the CT. So, if the multiplier's incorrect, then the entire reading, again, may be multiplied by the wrong amount, which some of the multipliers are 800, 1,200, 80, large multipliers. So, if you have a small error and then we're multiplying it by a large number, we've really multiplied that error across the board.
Any other questions for staff?
I've got one for Becky. Mayor, is, our present system, do we send it out and if a customer complains and says they think it's a meter reading wrong, do we send it out and check?
The current process is, the customer pays for the, for the meter testing.
And have we found any that people have complained about that have been faulty?
On the electric side or water side?
No, I'm talking about the electric side.
Elect, to my knowledge...
We're just doing water, electric.
We're talking about electric right now. We sent out a half dozen meters last week, got the results back today. They were all water. We sent one electrical meter out and don't have results back on that. And again, that's in the last three weeks.
I guess where I'm getting at this is what is driving this, because we haven't had any electric ones show up?
That's a really good question. What mainly brought this to my attention was reading a study of about fifty to fifty-eight to sixty cities that a third party did on municipalities and best practices in meter reading and utility billing. And they highlighted what the things that the best performers in the group were doing for their systems as far as increasing accuracy and efficiency in their programs. And one of the highlights of their study was to be testing CT meters consistently.
And just so you know, our margin has not been as high as we would expect. And so, that's been brought up for a couple of years, but in the past, it just wasn't one to do this.
We're suspecting that there's-
We're suspecting that there is some people out there that are not paying for the utilities.
Expect that a part of this test will be an audit of all meters, I mean, or all meters that are in service being accounted for?
Yes. In fact, we found two recently. They were very large meters that were not being accounted for. They were put in by the developer.
Thank you for sharing this too. I mean, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and the residential side, it's really much harder to catch than you would think, okay? Because we have a lot of second homes and we have vacation homes where it is valid that they would have two or three months of minimum bill, because they're not there, okay? So, to say, oh geez, why didn't you see that? Well, you go and you check it, and sure enough, they weren't there, and that was valid. They should've had two or three minimum bills together. So, you know, we really need, and this is not affecting residential, okay? This is going after the larger users.
It's a fair statement with this new Neighborhood Services where Becky's taking lead here. You'll be able to really take advantage of that and look at those things and be able to make that up in the future.
Right.
It's just one step.
Right. We want to correct it and then go forward with accurate results.
Any more questions? This time, I'd entertain a motion to accept a master professional services agreement with Texas Meter and Device Company for the testing and verification of operation of our CT meters for a period of no more than forty hours.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson, a second by Mr. Perkel.
I would like to suggest that the staff include this type of testing in their five-year plan, at least having that one time in their five-year plan.
So noted. Call for the question. All in favor of agreement of a master professional service agreement with Texas Meter and Device Company, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We have one nay. Please note, that was Councilman Allen. Motion carries. Brings us to item number three. Discuss and approve recommendation from Granberry Historic Properties Corporation to begin demolition of the Quonset Hut as part of the renovation of the Opera House. I would like to mention that Granberry Historic Properties met today. During the meeting, it was discussed and bringing forward to a recommendation to our council that we proceed forward with the demolition of the Quonset Hut. With that in mind, the council needs to also take this forward to our historic commission for their approval as well, following any kind of action taken by our council.
Mayor, I have a motion.
We have a motion. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the demolition of the Quonset Hut as part of the renovation of the Opera House. And in so doing, that we also, during the same process, we seek approval of the demolition through the historic board.
We have a motion from Mr. Tyra. Need a second? Second by Mr. Hewlett. Open it up for some discussion if council cares to. Councilman Tyra, do you wanna discuss this at all? I'm just gonna go around the board.
Well, and I wanna make it short, that there's been a lot of time spent on this issue, and this is a way for us to move forward quicker. While all these other things are going forward with the planning, like you talked about today at the board level, and the engineers and architects, this will allow the city, the city staff, to go forward and do this at very minimal cost. So, I think it's a win-win. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just note that the bank who has the note on that building has been contacted, and they're okay with the demolition, once they get the request in writing.
As a note on that, Granberry Historic Properties also passed a motion to have the treasurer forward a note or a letter to First Financial, who holds the note, the paper, on the Granberry Opera House, of which the Quonset Hut is one of the assets, that is one of the collateral items on that note. And they have stated verbally that they just need a letter to move forward with the demolition, and once approved by council.
And they will respond back in writing to recognize that they've approved that. So, I will get that before we move forward with the demolition.
And the demolition, from what I understand, will be taken on by the city workers. Is that correct?
Right. We did an analysis to look, see if we could take down the Quonset Hut piece by piece, store it and put it back up somewhere else. We found that we could build a new building cheaper than doing that. So, we're going to demolish it, sell it for scrap, and the city will, the city employees will do that at much cheaper cost.
One concern I have is we have a lot of items inside of the Quonset Hut. At some point, we need to dispose of those items. Mr. Hewlett, do you got anything to add?
I'd like to make a suggestion that we did, I did hear talk about the expenses and the manpower that it would take the city to take and remove all the stuff that's in the Quonset Hut. If it's possible-
Could I interrupt you for just a second? Can I get you to just move a little bit closer to your microphone, please?
But if it was possible that we possibly have a city auction on one day and take and offer all that stuff in there at an auction and get rid of it and let the people that buy the stuff take it out of there, that would save us some costs to the city and also the manpower that we'd be utilizing to take this stuff out of there. I don't know if we could add that to that, or just-
Well, we can't move forward with a motion on that attack, but we can put that on to a future agenda. Or we could call a special meeting to address that kind of concern. So, it is-
There's a lot of stuff in there, the way I understand, that could be sold or salvaged, or whatever people want to do with it.
Tools, costumes, flats, scenery, those kind of things.
You would call a special meeting where it wouldn't slow this thing down any?
I think we can do that. I'll look at the calendar at some point.
What would the special meeting be for?
To address whether or not to dispose of the items through an auction, the items inside of the Quonset Hut, as a means of speeding up the demolition process. Currently, what would happen is the city staff would wind up having to go through it and remove all that stuff. Some of it may be of some value to members of the general public. Other production companies might also seek some of the items as valuable.
Let me ask you then, would the attorney be open to me amending the actual motion to include that?
Not today. It's not posted on the agenda. I talked about any kind of purchase, sale of it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be reticent to support an immediate demolition of the Quonset Hut. We are just barely in the beginning phases of the planning process. We don't know whether it's gonna cost us six million, two million, one and a half, or one point two. So, I'm wondering if we really wanna go in and tear down a building that might have continuing utility for a much less price than a new building back there. I support the new building, there's no doubt about that, and I support getting rid of the Quonset Hut. But I'm reticent to support it's being taken down at this point in time. My question might then be, lie around what the timeline is. If we tear it down, I don't know, I don't think y'all came up with the date in which you would commence this destruction or demolition. But if we're looking at six months to do water, or six months to do the utilities, then that might make it more imperative to get it going now. But if it only takes a month to do the utilities and a month to do the water after the teardown, then we might be just as well off to set on it for a month or two.
Call a question.
I'd like to hear from staff regarding a timeline, actually, regarding this. I think it's important to respond to his question as to how long it takes to demolish the building, to gut the building, to remove the merchandise.
And I respect, Mayor, I definitely agree with you, but you understand, we've already had a meeting that he's sitting in, and that we talked about, the staff made it clear they can tear it down in three weeks. I mean, all this information has been discussed, even in a council meeting prior to this. And so, I'm asking our peers here, we heard three weeks is what it'll take for city staff to do it. It would be a huge benefit to start all those utilities back there. They've already made clear to us over and over through Alva Cox and meetings prior to this, since two thousand and seven when they got the money.
I'm just gonna pull it all back and-
From January one, take three weeks away. That means you need to start the demolition December the twelfth or something.
No, I think that we leave it to the staff.
We need to look at, we need to understand from staff what the length of time it's gonna take to do the utilities behind there.
I don't understand why it would make any difference, because we talked about this, all we're doing is delaying, getting out perhaps.
Mayor, all due respect, the staff is, we're giving this to the staff. We trust their judgment to take demolition, to move forward with utilities. They're doing it all. So, let's give it to them. Let's take us out of the equation here, and that's what we're doing by calling the question, again.
Once again, we're just going to move forward, and point of order, you called for the question. This time, entertain, we've got a motion on the floor to proceed with the demolition of the Quonset Hut by staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note for the record that Councilman Parson was the nay vote on that. Motion passes. Moving on to item number four. Discuss and approve the addition of one point two million dollars to the recently approved city utility revenue bond, series two thousand and eleven, for design permitting and piloting costs for the proposed two point five million gallon daily Granberry Water Treatment Plant. During the September sixth council meeting, councilperson Parson requested that an agenda item be added to this agenda to discuss and approve adding the cost of completing the pilot study, design and permitting for the proposed Granberry Water Treatment Plant to as part of the city utility revenue bond, which was just passed at the previous council, series two thousand and eleven. I would like to point out that in your packet that was laid before you, not that was presented any time earlier for consideration, but it was laid before you today, you have a comparison between a three point five million dollar issue and a four point seven million dollar issue. Council, do you see that packet? This is a schedule. We're looking at some approximate eighty-five thousand dollar difference in a monthly payment. Is that annual? I'm sorry, in an annual payment per year, difference between taking out the additional one point two million dollars at this time. One thing to bear in mind, that if the city does wanna move forward with the surface water treatment plant, it takes approximately one year for what's called the pilot study to be conducted and approved by TCEQ. Following that, there is a timeline of three years within which you can act upon that pilot study. However, that pilot study can be extended by TCEQ through the filing of certain paperwork, which means that we can extend the start of a surface water treatment plant for a minimum of four years and on out to however many, however long the term is that you have it extended. I have one question for Alva regarding the extension. Is the extension period an additional three-year timeframe for the permit to be allowed, or the pilot study to be considered?
Currently, the permit, there's two different things. Pilot study, actually, you don't have to renew it again unless, or change it whatsoever. It stays valid forever unless the feds or the state comes back and changes up the rules and regs. On the permit itself, the system-wide permit is gonna be up, I believe, May two thousand and fourteen. And then if we go, and you can renew it, yes. And the first, if it's not under construction, it's two years. If we start construction, it would be an extra five years and five years thereafter.
Once we start-
Get close to construction, it would be a five-year permit at that time.
Okay.
But it would be renewed every two years.
Alright. That answers that question for me. So, and the other issue I have for finance, if the city goes off and adopts a three point five million dollar issue, as we just did at the previous council meeting, and then say, a year down the line, we go out seeking more revenue bonds for the system's utility revenue side of it, does that increase or decrease our rating as far as a bond company is concerned?
Well, you wanna combine as many things as possible in any bond issue you go to, because first of all, it's expensive to issue a bond. And then, secondly, the more times you go out, they do look at the propensity of going to the bond market. So, it's a negative to go a number of times. It sort of indicates that you're not doing long-term planning, that you didn't think through what you needed for that bond. That's the logic that I've been exploring.
Councilman Tyra, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
I have some questions from Mr. Alva, if you wouldn't mind stepping back up to the podium. And I am really glad to see these numbers, the way they came in, and I appreciate the mayor's comments concerning going out for a bond and doing it all together. It's my understanding from previous conversations and actually being involved in this, that if this is approved by the council, just like any other bond, that money is like Opera House bonds that started since two thousand and seven, it'll be up to the council and recommendations from the staff on when that actual project, that pilot project is actually initially started. That'll be decided from you and staff, and it'll come back to the council.
I believe so, yes, sir.
It would be a council decision as to whether or not to actually move forward. It's just that we would have the money to do so when we got ready without having to go out and seek bond revenue.
And let me say this real quick. Right now is a great time to go to the market. We actually believe we're gonna get close to three percent interest rate on this. And, you know, it's hard to believe, but we're gonna have a very low interest rate.
And Mayor, and this is to staff as well, and to the city manager, you guys have worked hard on this to get us where we're at tonight, because there was a time we didn't know if this would be able to happen or not. But I just wanna make sure that everybody understands from my point of view, that the plant, building the plant is not starting tonight. We're talking about a bond, heard from our finance guys, this is the time to do it, and then we can proceed in the future as the council is ready to move forward.
Yes, sir. Exactly. What this will do is this will put us in great position when we get ready to, and the timelines, it's been talked about, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen range, this will put us right there. I mean, we'll be in perfect shape by doing that.
Yeah, and one thing I'd just point out, as you see here on the four point seven million dollar analysis, this is from John Martin. He's involved with this. You can just look over in the right-hand column.
That's John Martin with Southwest Securities.
All debt coverage over in the affordability ratios under all debt coverage. Can we afford this? Yes, we have to keep the all debt coverage above one point two. As you can see, the lowest it gets down to is one point five six, and then goes up to two point twelve. We can afford this money.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve the addition of one point two million dollars to the city utility revenue bond, series two thousand and eleven, for design permitting and piloting costs for the proposed two and a half million gallons per day Granberry Water Treatment Plant.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson, a second by Mr. Tyra. Any other discussion regarding this motion? Call for the question. All in favor of approving the additional one point two million dollar for the utility bond, series two thousand and eleven, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number five on the deliberation agenda. Discuss Senate Bill one hundred and its effects on the May uniform election date as it applies to municipal elections. Just for a little bit of background, the Texas legislature passed Senate Bill one hundred, which no longer requires county election administrators to contract with cities to conduct municipal elections in May of even numbered years. And also, for note, for the general public's note, the city election is held in May, and it's held every year, both odd and even. We have three-year terms for all council members. Two council members are elected each and every year. This means that what the issue is, is that there's a federal law out there, the state bill supports that, State Bill one hundred. It basically says that the primary date could interfere, a primary runoff date, I should clarify, a primary runoff date could interfere with a May election. And that is why there is no mandate out there by the state to require counties to hold the elections on behalf of the city. So, with that being said, we've got some options out there for us. And one of the options is buying equipment and conducting our own municipal elections.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I gotta ask you a question, because I need to. I think-
Doing background here.
I think that maybe I'm gonna need to recuse myself, and so is Mr. Perkel, because if we go with option two, we would be voting to give ourselves until November to come into May. And I wanna see if the attorney thought that was appropriate. Option two, looks like we take our election that's in May all the way to November, and so that would give us time in our seats longer. And so that would give us time in our seats longer.
If you're asking if it's a legal conflict of interest, I don't think it is.
You don't think it's a conflict of interest?
The reason I don't think it would be is because it affects all of council. Everybody on council will then be rotated around to the.
We just have to be up first, huh?
You guys are first in the seat.
Everybody's okay with it.
It also affects every council from now until the future of infinity.
Okay, all right, I appreciate you letting me ring up, Mayor, thank you.
So, as additional options, I just want to mention that option two, as you heard, is moving the council election date to November. It is considered to be the easiest and most cost-effective way, because it could then run concurrent with any general election that's currently being held by the county. And there would still just be the effect of, the city currently contracts for the services of voter... What do you call yourself, election administrator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And so, we contract with her on an annual basis to conduct the election for the city. But what we would see in addition to this would be, we would then, if we took option one, we would have to actually find somebody to administer the election, as well as come up with the equipment of our own to conduct the election. But I understand you're here because there has been a little bit of a change in option one. Is that what I'm understanding? And the other option, there's three options. The other option, three, is altering the term of the office for the council members, which means that we would move from the even-numbered years cycle to an odd-numbered years cycle, which would mean a rewriting of our charter. The charter would have to be rewritten to where the council is split, three and three. Three council members elected in the first odd year to come up, which was, would be May of 2013. And three members would wind up being on the ballot of the next one, which would be 2015. How we would do that, I'm not quite sure, but I guess it could be done by straw vote. But it's a more complicated option for us out there. And as I mentioned, it does require an amendment to the charter. And the charter was just amended in 2010. It can't be amended for two years, which means we get into 2012 before you can amend the charter. And it has to be done at a general election, which wouldn't take place until November of 2012, which still puts you behind the eight ball to hold your elections. So, option three is really, not really an option. Bringing us back to option one, Lois, hello, welcome.
Mayor, Council, thank you for inviting me tonight. Originally, Senate Bill 100 was in response to the Federal Move Act of 2009. The main purpose of the Move Act, which stands for Military Overseas Voter Empowerment Act, is to ensure that military and overseas voters receive all federal ballots 45 days before each election to give them time to receive it, vote, and return it to us. Texas has already been doing that. We've been in a real tight time crunch in March, and then it's impossible to do it with a primary runoff, because between primary and primary runoff was only 42 days.
Did, correct, I just want clarification. You said before primary runoff and primary runoff, I think you meant city council or?
No, between primary in March and primary runoff is 42 days under the old law.
Okay.
So, even before we had a primary, we were already in violation of federal law. So, with the Senate Bill 100, what that did was move the runoff election to the fourth Tuesday of May instead of April. The local entities' election is always the second Saturday of May. So, what that would mean for me and my department is we would finish the local entities' election Saturday evening, and then either at 7:00 or 8:00 Monday morning, be ready to go for primary runoff election, early voting. I would have about a 36-hour window to complete everything I needed to complete, secure machines, lock them down, set up, and be ready to go again. I did happen to do that last year when there was a city council runoff election, and there was a state senate runoff election. Those were very small elections, very few polling places were being used, and it was extremely difficult. So, my main concern is, will my staff and I be able to handle that quick turnaround? And plus, the duties that we required to make sure that both elections are handled properly. This year is a primary. I'm estimating somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,000 mail-out ballots. That's what we had for the last presidential election three years ago. And I anticipate somewhere around that neighborhood too, of about another thousand. The city usually has somewhere in the neighborhood of about 10 to 15 mail-out ballots. I do not want to disenfranchise a single voter, but according to state law, primary and primary runoff has to be my priority. And I just want to make sure that city elections are handled properly and thoroughly with the most attention. I do know that Toller City and Toller School are moving to November, as well as the city of De Cordova. At this time, I do not know if Lepan will be moving or not, either Lepan City or Lepan School District. The more entities that will move to November, the more work, the less work it will be for me, and the more I can accommodate the city staying with May. I know the city of Crescent is requesting to stay with May. They're a very small entity. Most of the time, their elections are canceled because nobody's challenged.
I have a question for you concerning this. For instance, how many polling precincts does the city have to utilize to hold a city election? Is there a requirement that we have to be in all four precincts of the county?
No, at this point in time, on a regular May election, I have the county down to seven precincts from the current number of 16 countywide. We do consolidate. The city is in three of those seven precincts in May. If the Granbury School District, which I understand is waiting for the city to make a decision and there to go along with the city or not, they have to use five precincts because of the population and turnout, and those things get taken in consideration. If the school district does not stay with the city, then we can go with two precincts on May on Election Day. And that's all you would need. Again, if the school board, the school district stays with the city, then that number would go up to three precincts in May, because the school district would have five.
Okay, and let me just take that a step further. I understand that if the city was to purchase, say, three election boxes, you feel certain that if the city purchases three, that your staff would be able to program those and put them into operation without any issue, and May elections could continue to be operated in May?
If it's just the city of Granbury, yes. If city of Granbury and Granbury School District, I've requested six. Our machines do tabulate, and votes do stay on the machines. And by law, I cannot reuse the actual physical voting booth for 30 days after they are used in case there is a court order. That's what my biggest problem with the equipment is coming down to, because I have to lock and seal those machines for 30 days.
And these machines that the city would have would have to be under lock as well, is that right? And so, my question would then be, if the city buys the machines, who's going to house the machines?
What I have talked to Attorney Stuart Neal about is if the city would purchase three additional machines, I have all the other equipment, plenty of equipment other than those, that they would be added to the county's inventory. The county would put them on their maintenance contract, and then it would be just the same we're doing right now. I would be the one that makes sure those machines are loaded with the proper ballot information. I'd make sure the judges are trained on how to use them. They would work them, they would return them to me, and they would be stored in my facility.
Okay, and you know, we can't make any decision regarding Granbury ISD.
I know.
All we can consider is what the city has. So, with that being said, you're stating that three additional machines purchased through the city would accommodate us retaining a May-held election?
Yes.
We did it in May, I mean in November. Then we don't need no machines?
No.
Mayor, I've got a motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Uh, hang on just a second with your motion. Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney.
In your packet, I just wanted to draw your attention to two things in your packet. The city manager asked me to go out and get quotes for what it would cost if we were to either rent the machines or to purchase the machines. And so, the first page you have in your packet says "Elect Now", and it's got a check mark on it real big at the top. It should be black and white. That is the cost if you wanted to rent the machines from the company. I got the specifications of the different machines we would need from Ms. Joplin here. And so, that's the quote if you wanted to rent them.
And that number was $4,274.
No, no, that's for all.
That would be for three.
Three of them. I didn't get a quote on six, because we're only interested in what the city, which would be three. The next thing in your packet, it's got kind of a blue header on it. Mine says "Attachment, three, item five on the top, dated September 16th." That is the quote for if you were to purchase the machines outright. And three refurbished machines at $1,695 each would be $5,085. And Lois told me that she's already got the printer packs and all that other stuff. One thing I will clarify, and Lois, back me up. You told me that if the city was going to run a special election in May with only one item on it, you could handle that election, right?
Yes.
Can you explain, because I don't understand, and I still don't understand, what's the difference if you can handle an election with one item, why can't you handle an election with two items? Which would be a regular city council election.
The biggest issue that I have is, again, making sure that the mail-out ballots are handled properly, that everything is programmed and loaded. A special election, we may even be able to shrink it down to just one polling location on Election Day, depending on turnout and anticipated turnout. If you're going to do something like a charter amendment, that election does not bring very many people out. If it is a highly contested city council race, that tends to bring more people out to vote, which means more equipment, more polling locations, more everything. Also, I know you have no control what the school district is planning on doing, but after talking to them, they are waiting for Granbury to take the lead to make their decision on what they're going to do.
I have a question for her, Mayor, that just came up in her last discussion there. Tell me if I get this correct, that if you just had a regular election with nothing but just two candidates, okay, you could have one polling place there, correct?
If it's a small enough election, yes.
Well, if it's just two candidates in the city, is that small enough?
Yes.
So, then, would that, would those candidates, who runs on those even years, have one polling place? Other ones have more than one polling place?
We could do that, and it would just mean then you would have to submit a notification to Department of Justice, changing from one polling location to two or three polling locations.
Well, that's my point. If we do it in the even year for one polling place, do all those other polling places we do in regular elections in May for other council members, would that come to one, or would it just be like it always is?
It would depend on what the council chose to do.
So, it's council decision as to where we place those polling locations?
There was an issue. When I took over elections in 2006, there were some school districts that were being used. Sometimes the school administration booth's building was being used. Sometimes city hall was being used. And there was a lot of confusion with voters, because they never knew where they were going, depending on what election was held, what was being canceled. And I asked all of my entities at that time, when I took it over in 2006, can we agree to use the county polling locations? And this is how we're divided up, this is how we would consolidate the precincts, to lessen voter confusion. I have a good relationship with all of those locations. I know what services are available. The voters know where they're going. So, it really simplifies it. The biggest thing about voting is we want to make it as simple as possible for the voter. The more changes, the different things you start doing, the more aggravated they're going to get, and they're going to say it's not worth it.
Any other questions for Lois regarding this? Councilman Allen?
Yes, sir. I think it'd be fair for all of us, or whoever's running against us, to have it on option two. That way, where every year, somebody comes up, they could get the same amount of voting places as the guy that, if we did it on our own, this year here, next year you've got three. So, I'll make a motion to go with option two.
Option two is the purchase of additional machines?
No.
I'm sorry.
It's in November.
Okay, I've got to get back to it, so, hang on.
No money to tax pay.
Mayor, if I may.
I need clarification from you on that.
I, when I put this, when I drew up this staff sheet, I envisioned this being a discussion item. If you want to physically move your elections to November, just make a motion to direct the attorney to draft the resolution to do so. You have to pass a resolution or an ordinance to do that. And I can do that, and I can have it ready, but just give me the direction of where you want to go.
Yeah, this is just strictly a discussion item tonight. So, what we have before us is we've got three options. I'd like to hear from Councilman Tyra, I've heard from you, I've heard from Councilman Allen. Let me take it over here to my other side. How about junior councilman, Mr. Hewlett? Anything you'd like to put in to the discussion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Perkel?
Well, I think it needs to be as simple as possible. The more places and different times you have voting, the more people get lost. Even though it ends up giving me up to 16 a month, I feel that we need to make it easy for the public to find places.
Councilman Parsons?
I'm, we're sticking with May. I'm not a fan of putting this in the middle of the bipartisanship of runoffs.
And that's a question I would have for you, Ms. Lois, regarding that. If it was moved to November, does the city have the right to ask that our ballot vote be at the top of the election ballot? And not down at the bottom underneath something else?
The county uses this, is election system and software. Their programming will not allow it. Straight party ticket has to be at the front of the ballot, and then all other races at the end. So, it would be past the straight party vote, so you would be down with, school districts and cities and stuff would be at the bottom. But the equipment is set up, is designed, and our workers are good at notifying people and saying, "Local races are at the end of your ballot. When you hit straight party, you're not going to vote for everybody." They have to go through every page of the ballot, even if they do vote straight party. Once they then go into the review, the review will say, "You did not vote for everybody. This race does not voted on. Did you mean to skip this race?" Once they hit the vote button, then they get another option that says, "Hey, you did not cast a vote in every race. Are you really sure you're ready to cast this ballot?" And then they have that final option to go back and change it or hit vote. So, it is there. It's going to mean my staff is going to have to be very diligent and say, "Local races are at the end of the ballot." It's going to mean candidates, no matter what entity they're with, are going to have to be very diligent when they go out and campaign and say, "Look at the end of the ballot." That's where your local races are going to be.
Lois, would you agree that traditionally, the ballots in a federal election go federal, state, and then local races last?
Yes. Another vendor can put the local elections first. But generally, it goes federal races, state races, district races, county, then precinct races. And it just kind of works down by largest to smallest. Then it would go school district, and then the cities.
Okay. So, in your mind, there's no way municipal election would get lost in the balloting system in November?
No, sir.
And if we were to move to option one, we're talking just a hit of $5,085. County would store the machines, county would administer the machines, program the machines. All we would have is the cost and possible use of those machines whenever we needed them.
Yes.
For a May election.
How long do those machines last?
I have a contract, a maintenance contract. They come out every year and do maintenance on them. And they've been in service since 2006, and other than just a few minor issues, there's no timeline about how long they should last.
I need to make a note for the minutes that Councilman Allen has left the desk.
Could I add a comment as well? I talked to Superintendent Mayfield, and he is, although he does not know which way they will go, he stressed that. Okay, his board will make that decision. If they came with May, and we were in May, they would share the cost of the machines.
Not at our cost, our cost is for three machines. They have to purchase their own, correct?
Yeah, but also, I was under the impression that, you know, if they need five machines, they would share half of the three as well, and then purchase the two that they, extra that they would need.
Yes.
Councilman Allen is back in the room. Councilman Allen is back in the room.
Mayor, can I ask Lois a question?
Yes.
Would we need to enter into a contract also with a, uh, warranty on our machines we purchase?
That would be added to the county's list. You would be, you would be purchasing the machines and donating to county, county, they would be added to our inventory and we would then pick up the cost of the maintenance.
Okay, so we've- we've got three items before us to discuss. We've discussed them. Uh, how about we put this on to an agenda item for the first of Octo- do we ha- my next question is, how soon do we have to act on this to make a decision to have it happen in a timely enough manner? I mean, can we wait until January?
The law allows you to officially finalize the decision by December 31st, 2012.
Oh.
Next December.
Well, we can't do that.
But if you're considering doing this for next May, it takes 60 days for the Department of Justice to pre-clear if you're gonna move to November. So we, I usually send the contract to the city secretary in January. She brings it before the council in fe- the first meeting in February. So counting back from January, you would need to have that DOJ submission in prior to mid-October in case Department of Justice says, "Nope, I'm not gonna allow you to move this to November." Um, and then at that point in time, you would have to go forward with the May election. I don't know why Department of Justice would deny it, but just in case, you would need to have it ready to submit to them by mid-October.
I have one more question. I'd like to ask the election committee, what is your preference? Do you have a preference? Please, here.
I like the idea. It would simplify everybody. Last year, I held seven elections. We had people that were tired of voting and said it to us numerous times. Why cannot all of these elections be combined? It would save money and it'd be much simpler. My biggest drawback with the city moving to November, if there is a runoff, that would put that runoff election in December. And there's other duties that I have to do in December that I would just have to make sure, I would have to budget my time very, very carefully to make sure everything is handled correctly.
So what's your preference?
November.
Alright. I'll just make note, next year's an even number year and even though the law says you have till December 31st, 2012 to make a decision, you don't really have that long because you've gotta make a decision in time to do something in May if you wanna keep it in May. If she's saying she's not gonna do it in May and let you buy for the machines.
With that being said, I'd, um, suggest that we put this on to the agenda of the second meeting in October for a decision by council. In the meantime, we can go to bed and sleep on it. So on October 18th, I'd like to see that this actually wind up on the agenda for a decision between option one and option two. Need a motion?
So moved, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second by Mr. Allen. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number six. Thank you, Lois. Brings us to item number six. Discuss and approve the Hudson Group contract for advertising services during the 2011-2012 fiscal year. The Tourism Board has recommended approval of the Hudson Group contract for advertising services during the upcoming fiscal year. The value of the contract, uh, is a max of $400,000, but the contract identifies specific dollar amounts to be charged for those services. This time, I'd like to ask the chair of the Tourism Board to actually come up and make a presentation to us as to why they chose to stick with the Hudson Group and give us any related information, cause quite honestly, in our packet, we were granted one thing and then I was sent an email by Mr. Leach, uh, that contained two additional items and before I knew it, I now have received an entire packet that's, uh, I- I don't know, it's maybe 40 pages. And to, quite honestly, we didn't get a chance to look over any of this. So it- it brings to mind the question of why did we wait till the last minute to get this out, knowing we had this discussion and we were discussing the issue? Cause I know you've been in contact with Hudson Group for months now. They've- they've been the, uh, the creative marketing group that we've been utilizing it. And the hope was we would be moving forward, knowing that this contract was only a three or four month contract and that we were moving into a new fiscal year, which would require additional dollars. You heard during discussion at, uh, our budget workshop that we had increased that to some $400,000. And I felt like we had given sufficient enough time as a council to be presented with the full scope of the project. And quite honestly, I- I'm a little miffed about it, but that's a personal thing. I got over it after I read email after email and page after page. But, uh, I- I'm just wondering where- where we- where we dropped the ball on this whole issue. So if you can respond to that, I'd appreciate it, please.
Uh, I'd be happy to. Thank you for, uh, allowing us to deliberate this on the agenda today and hopefully, um, discuss and approve. I think part of it is, is that, um, when we had the workshop session, uh, back in July, I think we got, uh, a little sidetracked on what we wanted to present at that meeting. And then we had that follow-on conversation, uh, the next day and at that time, we were informed that we should try to stay within the $400, $400,000, uh, amount. Um, since that time, we have, you know, continued to try to expand on what we're doing with tourism with the Hudson Group. We've been, uh, as you can see in the information that we sent over to you, there's been a lot of activity and a lot of, uh, things that have been going on with the Hudson Group to try to build on tourism. I think there might've been a, uh, a little misunderstanding on our part, maybe as to, uh, whether or not we should have been put on another, uh, council meeting deliberation agenda. We would've been happy to bring that forward, uh, at that time and- and present a lot more of this information in- in sort of a staggered step sort of approach instead of just bringing you all this information tonight. So-
It's the 11th hour issue, I'd- I'd have to say-
I understand, yeah.
-that is more upsetting to council, uh, at least to me and I've heard from other council members that it's this pile of paper. We've killed a lot of trees tonight just to produce this paper and it's here now.
Right, it's, it's-
The item's been-
You're right, it's, it's there.
Been out there for a while.
Yeah, but I think it what it, it's not just words on paper. I think it's actually things that have been do- we've been doing that are right and that we've been building a foundation and momentum since we hired the Hudson Group in May to do the things that we need to do. So in reference to that, I think what you'll see in that information, whether it came at the 11th hour or the third hour, is that this indicates that we are moving forward and that we do have momentum and that we're starting to re-engineer how we do tourism in Granbury. So I- I respectfully understand your- your point, Mayor, as to that this wasn't 11th hour kind of thing. Uh, we will try in the future not to do that if we're given the opportunity to approve this contract and go forward. Um, I think in- in conversations I've had with a few of you, uh, recently, I- I think that what we're gonna do going forward, which will hopefully remedy this kind of situation again, is that we plan on providing, or the Hudson Group plans on providing to the Tourism Board and the City Council a weekly bulletin of activity that's going on and progress that's being made. And at the end of every month, there'll be a recap. So every week, you'll get a weekly bulletin in your email as to this is what we're doing to advance the initiatives that we have presented already in that $115,000 plan that you had before you in supplementing the $285,000 plan. And you'll get a much more, uh, complete, uh, communication from us on an ongoing basis instead of this, you know, kind of information you get at the last minute.
Okay.
So we will, we understand the concern, we understand that that needs to change.
Well, I appreciate that statement. Why does the Tourism Board feel it best to go with Hudson Group, please?
Well, I think because, um, partly because we have a contract with them and I- I kind of view this as renewal of the existing contract. Um, I think that they're very well qualified to do the advertising, the marketing, the social media and the PR. Um, I think they've proven themselves. Beth's company has been in business for seven years and has been working in the, in this industry for 10. Um, I think it's a testament that, um, companies like Fort Worth and others who have been clients of theirs over the years have been very happy with them. Um, you can call the CEO of the Fort Worth CVB, I think he'd give a resounding endorsement to the Hudson Group. Um, I think we've started this process. I think to stop it and change direction and go a different way would slow us down and I think we'd be starting over. And I think that would be a disservice to the in- to the merchants, to all the tourism entities in town that need the support that we have got, we've got going now with the Hudson Group.
So, so in your perspective as, uh, head of the Tourism Board, are you hearing positives from merchants regarding this?
Absolutely. Um, and Beth has some testimonials that she has from merchants and businesses in Granbury who have said that she is making a difference in their business.
Alright. Any other questions for Mr. Leach from council? Mr. Allen, go ahead.
Is Beth here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Yes, sir, she is.
But we'll call her up here in just a second. I- I'm asking if you've got questions for Mr. Leach or the Tourism Board.
First off, thank y'all for what y'all are doing. Uh, it's an unpaid job for y'all and a lot of headaches, I'm sure.
Well, it's not headaches, we just wanna do it right.
I appreciate it. But, uh, Jim, I talked to two of your members that wasn't 100% sold on them. Now, they might not have been there the day they, y'all voted on getting Hudson Group to extend their contract. The two of your board members was against it, you know, or said they wasn't that satisfied, put it that way, they said it was against it.
How many total on the board, Jim? Nine?
Yeah, I think we have nine. We have nine. Yeah.
But I looked at this contract and I'm not gonna repeat what the mayor said, cause when you get 39 or 40 pages, you know, we'd had that a week ago and I'm sure if y'all knew a week ago, y'all'd been on target.
We would've gotten it to you, yeah.
My understanding, when we hired them for five months, that we was gonna get reports already and let us know what they were bringing into town, what kind of return on a, on investment we were getting from them.
We'll- we'll ask that question of-
Never got into that. Get with her on that.
Of Ms. Hudson.
Look at the contract, I'm gonna talk about figures on the contract. We need to talk to her, Mayor?
Yes, we would need to address that of her, that's her contract. Alright, any other questions for Mr. Leach?
Jim, uh, I guess what, one statement, uh, you stated that the merchants were pretty high on this right now. Now, me as a city councilman, uh, one of the things I get beat up on quite a bit is tourism. And I haven't seen a relief for me yet. So if they're seeing results, then why are we still getting beat up about tourism?
Well, because I think some of the merchants don't, haven't seen, quite seen the benefit yet. I didn't say that all of them, I said some of them.
Well, I wouldn't, I'm just talking about, would, would the council up here see a relief also from the citizens, from the Hudson Group?
I sure hope so. We've got some strong, very strong-minded merchants and so-
It hasn't happened, it hasn't happened.
I could comment on that, Mr. Hewlett, now you-
It, it's, it hasn't, I mean, I, I, you know, I know that, uh, people have strong opinions and, um, you know, if, if they don't feel like their business is directly being affected materially by what the Hudson Group is doing at that moment, they're probably gonna voice that concern. And I understand that. I know some of the concerns that the board might have is, might be related to, you know, they don't want as much on advertising, they wanna do more with video, they wanna do more with TV, they wanna do these big production video kind of concepts. And I, I know you're talking about, Mr. Allen, and I believe that we're moving in that direction with, with the Hudson Group to satisfy the, the concerns maybe of a board, board or two that member that wants to move in that direction specifically. Um, but to go back to your point, uh, Mr. Hewlett, is, is that I think the merchants, and maybe Beth can speak to a couple of the merchants that she's been directly, uh, hearing from, that there are starting to see some momentum being built, especially in social media. And I think that's an area we have been sorely lacking in, uh, and we've been behind the curve. I just, I spoke to the, uh, to the head of the McKinney CVB the other day and she was telling me that they've been actively involved in social media for over two years. Well, our presence in social media was almost, really almost nonexistent when we hired the Hudson Group. And they've been able to put us in a very strong place. We're not there yet completely, but they put us in a strong place. So I think the social media push will continue to help the merchants. And that's a big part of what we're doing.
Any other questions for Mr. Leach?
Yes, I have some questions, Jim. Jim, again, thank you, the board, for your service. Obviously, this is your recommendation and this recommendation came from your board. We, as a council, obviously, are listening to a lot of folks and there's been some things that come back to me, uh, that have been negative. And, and one of the things, and I see it in the photo essay subjects, when I see certain businesses being targeted, where they're given what I've been told and I just said, "Hey, look, I'm, you know, we, we trust the advertising folks, we trust the folks who are paying to do that." Where they're given, uh, their, their business has been highlighted or put, you know, out there. And I do agree that social media, we were zero on that and we've made some great improvements. Social media i- is a very low-cost way to get out there and that's why we need to keep doing it. I'm not against any kind of contract here tonight. I- I'm really concerned about going forward at the rate that we're going forward with, when in fact, we did, Jim, as you sit here, cause I don't just to be about us and Tourism Board, this is about us together, working together. That we absolutely, and I asked to try to get a five, three-month contract, but my peers decided to go five. We have an opportunity here. We've looked at this. One thing I will agree with that, that Mr. Allen brought up was that we were told early on, when we first approved this, that there would be information come forward and we would see the return on our investment in this. We have not seen ROI in this.
Once again, I think that's an issue for the Hudson Group to respond.
And no, I'm, I just, I just want him, Jim, cause you're, Jim, you're gonna hear a lot of discussion when the Hudson Group disappears. And I want you to know, I appreciate everything you all have done. I have got constituents out there, they're concerned about spending this money. I have to represent them too. And I appreciate what y'all are doing. So there's some other things that come up, we'll talk about this and go further.
Thank you.
But I appreciate you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Well, Beth, uh, it seems like it's just a bash-bath-bash-Beth kind of a marathon, but it's, hopefully it's not. I- I'm hoping that we're going to be working together in a positive manner to promote the city of Granbury. Uh, as you heard, Beth, if you would, step up to the podium and, uh, for the record, state your name for us.
Beth Hudson with Hudson Creative Group and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having me.
Thank you. And, and you've heard our concerns, uh, looking for an ROI, some sort of return on investment report. We were promised at the onset that we were going to see that kind of, uh, deal, so we would know if our ducks were growing out there and if we were actually getting hits on our website. I, I see in your recap that you do indicate that there's some 57,000 posts on the Visit Granbury site. But, you know, that brings to mind, what are we doing to promote Visit Granbury as opposed to granberrytx.org or .com website? I, I don't understand the branching off, why, why we veered in that direction and why it's so important that we have this Granbury or Visit Granbury website in addition to Granberry TX website, which is our local promotional website that the city of Granbury spent several thousand dollars to build and create a platform. And although it is a limited platform for you to base some of your stuff off of, uh, I'm just curious how, how we're bringing those two together and through the promotion, are we actually seeing hits on both of the websites concurrently that feed off of one another so that, are we getting the bang for the buck? And can you, can you address your recap for me about social media and then just delve into other issues that you wanna recap for us?
Certainly, I'd be happy to talk about social media. You do have your website, which is great, but a website is a more static, um, you know, forum. The reason that we recommend Facebook for our clients is because it's real-time, interactive, where you can talk with potential visitors directly. Um, with your website, you can't have that conversation and the whole point of the social media is to build real longstanding relationships, to show activity every single day and to have a dialogue with our potential visitors.
So it's more of a social media website, is that what you're saying?
Visit Granbury is our Facebook page.
Alright. So that clarifies that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, you are able on our city website, our CVB website, our tourism website, you're able to make some sort of a link through that page to get over to Visit Granbury. Has that been done?
Yes, on the current website, you can link from the Granbury TX website directly to Facebook.
So, if you click Facebook, it takes you straight to the Granbury, I'm sorry, Visit Granbury website?
On Facebook, we have an information section that lists our website, so if people would like to get additional information, they can click straight over to the Granbury TX website.
But vice versa, how do, I don't believe the Facebook website on Granbury TX, you can correct me if I'm wrong, gets you to Visit Granbury on Facebook.
I have requested that they put a link on the website linking to our Facebook as well. I'm not exactly sure if that's been done, but I'm pretty certain that it has been, so you should be able to link back and forth from both sites and Facebook.
And that would help with the number of hits, I take it?
Yes, and something we're suggesting in the 2012 plan is that we have a live Facebook feed on our website, so if somebody's there, they can still see exactly what's going on on our Facebook page. I'm encouraged to like as well.
An RSS feed, is that correct? Basically, an RSS feed where it's real-time?
Not exactly. It's a real-time, live Facebook feed, so similar, but it'll actually show Facebook.
You do understand that the city's website that they bought and paid for has a bunch of modules in it, that additional modules will cost the city additional dollars to put into place on the website. Are you aware of the website design and what its limitations are?
I am, and I feel that there's a lot of things that could be more effective. We have put a proposal for upgrades to that website, but we could also work directly with the person that created the website and make suggestions if budget did not allow.
Counsel, you want to start off with questions of Ms. Hudson?
And I want to make it clear, I want to talk to my colleagues and the city manager publicly and go forward. I do not want to take this time for her to have to defend what's been done, there's been a few things that's come up, we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And I'm going to have to speak to my colleagues, and so I don't have anything to say to her, I'll just have some things to say.
I just need to ask, any of the council have any questions of Ms. Hudson? Councilman Allen?
Thank you for being here tonight, and I went to one of y'all's meetings, and it was real good. I'm not a computer person, so I had my general manager, manager there, and they took note of it. And I think y'all had another meeting y'all got canceled on, we said, Ray.
I'm not aware of what meeting that is.
Conference center?
As far as I know, we haven't canceled meetings. I know one day we had a day-long social media seminar, and one of our team members got very ill towards the end of the day, so her very last session, she did have to cancel, but she did have all the sessions leading up to that, and has reached out to the people directly that were in that one-on-one session and rescheduled with them.
My questions are this, who owns the face page that y'all laid?
The city of Granbury.
City of Granbury, okay. I looked at the contract, and before I asked that, is the one that gave us all that?
Is that the recap document that's very lengthy? Yes, that is for my team, and I am very sorry that you got it at 11th hour. The first time we heard request of that document was on Thursday around 4:20, so I apologize. That will not happen again.
That's fine, but I mean, we're talking about $400,000 to taxpayers' money.
Not all of that goes to the Hudson Group. A lot, just so you understand, a lot of that is advertising expenses.
Not a lot of it, 57% is what we get out of it. They get-
148K is what the service aspect of the contract is.
Actually, it's 172.
172, I heard it as.
It's the 100, it's the 12,333 times 12, plus you wanted 24,000 for the website.
Those would be optional, though.
Yes.
Those are optional. It's 148K annual, 12,333 per month. I'm just saying, as part of the service aspect of it, there would be additional.
Let me finish my, please. But you got, we're paying you $12,333 a month. Also, we're going to pay you for design and photographs, which is $2,000. Public relations, $48,000. Social media, $48,000, now that's advertising.
It's a little bit different. Advertising buys are that 285,000 page, the document you got in the 115,000 document, those are for advertising buys. Social media and PR are for services that Hudson Creative will provide directly.
That we pay y'all for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you add all that up, and I'm going to trust Wayne's figure, she's our chief man here, 172,000 of 400 goes to y'all to start with.
If you take the optional, the video?
Yeah, but if you don't take the optional, I mean, that's what they're saying is good. So, you divide that by 172 and 400, the taxpayers of this city is receiving 57% of $400,000. If I'm figuring right, I could be wrong. And I haven't had time to read the 40-page, I just got with a meeting to sort of this tonight. But breaking this down for designs, photographs, you're saying $4,333,35 hours.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then that equals to $123.80 an hour we're paying y'all. You go into each one of these items, total relation, $100 an hour, $100 an hour. Then if you flip over to y'all's contract, wait just a second.
You want the terms and conditions?
Yeah, well, I'm looking here, it says full usage rights, what do you mean by that?
That's under photography.
Basically, if our photographer takes any pictures, you'll have full usage rights. You will be able to use the photos however you want, for as long as you want, forever.
Okay.
If you give permission, it states in here.
That's what I fixed to say, you come back over, it says here, day rates, you're charging $1,700 for full day, $850 for half-day, for take-temperature. That's $212.00.
Well, that's a cost of an average day rate, but really, we don't work on day rates because we work on an as-needed basis for photography. So, on a weekly basis, we might send our photographer out to Granbury for two hours to capture images we need for advertising, or for a member of the media, or for social media. So, really, it's more on an hourly basis than a day-rate basis.
And then you got makeup, which is $125 an hour. What does the $12,1200 equal for paying you a month? What does that pay for?
Well, for PR, I believe that's $4,800, is that correct? I don't have the contract in front of me. Thank you.
That is 48,000 for public relations.
And you're working 40 hours per month?
Yes, but actually, we work a lot more than 40 hours a month, we're only charging you for 40 hours, and we'd be happy to give you a log of our hours. We're spending more like 40 hours a week, that's our choice, we're dedicated to this account, but yes.
I'm just reading what y'all sent, and I'm looking at 40 hours a month, we're paying $12,333,000, that equals to about $4,000, or let's see, about $3,000 an hour.
No, it's 40 hours of public relations a month, 40 hours of social media a month. So, we have many members of our team, you know, working simultaneously on this account.
Okay, now let's go to the contract.
Okay.
It says, "The project budget should be agreed upon in advance." That's between us and the city and your company, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then it says here, "The website video projects will require a half-down and half completion."
Yes, that's correct.
Have you done any of that yet?
No.
Okay.
That, Councilman Allen, just so you know, on that first page that you highlighted, that 172,000, those are those additional costs that you see, the web design and the video.
Yeah, okay, and then it comes down, and I marked it, it says that all this belongs to the Hudson Group. Oh, here it is, I apologize. "And we will have full usage rights if used in tasteful manner. Photos credit given to Brian Hudson. Permission asked before usage."
And photo, just so you understand, Councilman, photo credit would normally always be given to the photographer that took the photo, and his copyright, he would actually have copyright of those pictures.
So, if we want them, if, let's say, a year from now, they decided-
We just have to post his name. We would just, if we use that photograph that he took, we would have to put his photo by Brian Hudson.
Wouldn't we have to pay him any for it, Mayor?
No, sir.
Not?
No, no, we get full usage right, is what I understand, is that correct?
That's correct.
We don't have to have permission.
No, it does.
But this, this contract, just for clarification, does say that we have to have permission. The city desires exclusive rights to any of its images, because we want to be able to utilize them for not just anything you produce, but say, we want to help the EDC out with promotional DVD, we might want to utilize some of those photos for that. Of course, my understanding of photos is the photo credit and the copyright belong to Brian Hudson, or whoever the photographer happens to be, and he should be issued that credit whenever it's utilized in publication, or in print media, or in kind of video media. So, that portion of it, I think we're all in understanding of, is that correct, Councilman Allen? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, yes, sir, I understand. It's probably in this 40-page report here, but you were going to give us a monthly report when you had a five-month contract with us, of what you were bringing in to Granbury, the heads and beds and all that stuff, count of the clicks on our webpage, I'm sure all that's in here, but I haven't had time to read it.
That recap, just so you understand, Mr. Allen, is her social media recap? It is giving us a report to, up to date, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's limited, though, that's just limited to social media.
No, it's for all.
When I saw the website, so-
That's the Facebook one.
Talking about some of these other counters and ticks.
Well, like I said, Mayor, I haven't read it yet, but there's, this is, let's start this way, you said there was business that said you brought in a lot more customers since y'all been doing this.
Yes, that's correct.
How many was it?
Pardon?
How many business?
There should be a testimonial section towards the end of your packets, that does not, I don't have the packet in front of me, but it should be towards the very end, like the last few pages. I apologize.
No, and there were, Mr. Allen, there were some, there were some actually emails and things where business owners had congratulated their services. Mayor, I think there's an opportunity for us to resolve what's happening here tonight in a way, in a form and fashion that could actually be a win-win for everybody. As I'm sitting here listening, I'm thinking, this is what I've been listening to from other businesses, from constituents in certain places who probably don't have the information they need and that sort of thing, and we were overwhelmed tonight with quite a bit of information. But we need to continue, the social media, we need to continue moving forward and not stop. But one thing that really concerns me is that our new city manager has really made it clear that, and the council has dedicated, that they are really excited about handing off to him this new position that's coming forward, the Assistant City Manager, and the new structure that's came out, and this new gentleman or new lady is going to be marketing over tourism, that's going to be their specialty. And I know they're working on that, and it's going to take time. So, what I would like to put together as a compromise is to approve a three-month extension of the current Hudson contract, and not to touch this thing that's come forward now, because we have not had time to mull over it and to really dot the i's and cross the t's. So, I would move forward that we extend the current contract at the current cost for three more months, to give staff time to really get into the nuts and bolts of this, to maybe even bring us some other comparison further, but it also allow the city manager hire this person to come forward, so they can be a part of this, because we need this team leader to be on board, and I surely, as an elected official, don't want to put in stone a 12-month contract when this person could be here in three months, four months, and would like them to have a say-so in it. So, I've moved forward with a motion to extend the current Hudson Group contract for three more months, as it stands right now, at 8,000, whatever it was, 300, whatever we approved for five months.
We have a motion to extend the existing Hudson Group contract for three months, need a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Allen. Any further discussion regarding this motion? Calling for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Ms. Hudson, I hope you can take that forward, and we can work in a joint effort along with the Tourism Board to answer some of the concerns that the council has, and I look forward to seeing you the next time.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I now declare that Granbury City Council is convened into open session, and that all members are present. City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551.071, Consultation with an Attorney, and Section 551.072, Real Property Matters. We shall return shortly. Council members, if I can get you back in your seats, we do have a quorum. This meeting is now reconvened and opened session. This time, I'd hear from council regarding anything that they would like to make action upon.
Mayor, I have a motion, I move that we allow the city manager to negotiate a contract to purchase the Laguna Trace Water System.
Need, we have a motion to purchase the Laguna Trace Water System, and to have the city manager negotiate that agreement.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Perkel. Any discussion regarding that? Call for the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Any other action we need to take?
Mayor, I move that we allow the city manager to negotiate a contract to purchase the Monarch Utility Water System currently inside the city limits.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyrell, I'm going to give the second to Councilman Allen. Any discussion regarding this item? All in favor of approval of allowing the city manager to negotiate a contract with Monarch Utility? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.